Call meeting order, please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
President.
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 Our first order of business this evening is to conduct a public hearing on the record for written or oral comments from citizens regarding the proposed appropriation ordinance identified as 2016-2267 for the fiscal year commencing May 1st, 2016, and ending April 30th of 2017. I would ask the city clerk if he has received from any citizens or others any written comments to be included in the public hearing tonight. Okay. At this time, the chair would ask if there's anyone present in the audience, of which there's one. Are you here to speak or present any comments oral for? None? Does anyone on the council wish to make any comments for the record in regards to the appropriation ordinance as it has been presented? Mr. Reese, is there anything you'd like to add as counsel? Well, having received no written comments to be brought forth for or against of the appropriation ordinance and having no members of the community here to present any oral comments, at this time, without objection, the chair will call for the close of the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item, audience request, I would like to move that down the agenda at this time after ordinance for second reading adoption. The gentleman that asked for that time is on his way but has been delayed, so I'll allow him for to get here. So we'll move to community affairs. Ms. Bland is not here this evening, so we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Before the consent agenda is read, is there anyone that has any items on the consent agenda that they would like to have pulled from the agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2016, regular council meeting. Approval of the bills as presented. Recommendation from the council to send the Casey's Rock Falls subdivision Platte to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval and approval of resolution 2016-744, adding additional diagonal parking to the east side of Fourth Avenue.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda is read.
I would hold off on acceptance of the motion. Mr. Reitzel?
Yes, I would like number four to be voted on separately, please.
Chair will so do. So, Mr. Snow, I'm sorry for the interruption. Your motion would be for the approval of consent agenda items one, two, and three as presented.
Correct.
All right. Second?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Shuneman. Motion on the floor for approval of the consent agenda items one, two, and three. Any discussion further? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Item four was asked to be removed by Mr. Reitzel because of his involvement with the Tiff District and this ordinance affects the Tiff District, so he will recuse himself from the vote. So the chair at this time would entertain a motion for the approval of resolution 2016-744.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Shuneman, second by Mr. Folsom for ordinance 2016-744. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Rescues.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Six aye.
Given this situation, the same situation that we just addressed, normally for ordinances for first reading, we approve them all in one motion. We're going to take them one at a time this evening.
First ordinance for first reading is approval of ordinance 2016-2269, amending Chapter 18, Section 6, Section 18-163, to add subsections nine and 10 handicap parking on West Second Street.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Shuneman. Any discussion? This is first reading only. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion still carries.
Approval of ordinance 2016-2272, amending Section 18-120 stop intersections designated to add subsection 107 for East 14th Street at Mary Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, second by Mr. Kuhlmeier, ordinance 2016-2272. Questions? First reading only. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Approval of ordinance 2016-2273, amending Section 32-89 fire service for the addition of two-inch fire service lines.
Chair entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Logan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Snow for the first reading of ordinance 2016-2273. Questions?
Yes, your honor?
Yes, sir.
We may have a typo in here under, I guess, paragraph B below the rates. Says the rate specified shall be a charge for all meter readings taken for bills rendered after August 1st of 2006. Is that correct or should it be 16?
Then I'll ask the question, why are we having a 10-year delay?
Because the only thing they're doing is adding a two-inch service line to accommodate the requirements of the hotel, because otherwise they're not going to be charged for their fire service that is not heated. The original ordinance made all these other rates effective 2006, so I'll continue to update what all of these were effective to make sure that we don't go back and have to make refunds to people that have been charged that way since 2006.
Okay. Thank you, Rod. Thank you, Jim. Any further questions? First reading only, motions are made, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Second reading and adoption, if you would, Mr. Clerk, first one.
Adoption of ordinance 2016-2267, appropriation ordinance for the year beginning May 1st, 2016, and ending April 30th, 2017.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2016-2267.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Mr. Logan for approval of reading, second reading and adoption of 2016-2267. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2016-2270, disposal of surplus property, two 2016 PSI MSA air packs with four air tanks.
Make a motion to approve?
Second a motion. Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Shuneman to approve the adoption of ordinance 2016-2270. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2016-2271, amending the zoning map of the City of Rock Falls to reflect MU1 zoning for lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 of Rock Falls Glen's Garden subdivision.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, second by Mr. Logan to approve ordinance 2016-2271 for second reading and adoption. Questions? Want to get in here? Yes, sir, please.
We have a statement here, "The zoning board of appeals met on June 9th, 2014." Is that also correct or is that a mistake?
That was a date that I think I took from some minutes.
Can you confirm that?
I mean, it shouldn't have been 2014. It was just a recent, just the recent, it was the year 2014, it stated in here.
It should have been 2016.
That's an error.
That's an error in all three of those of the ordinances coming up. I noticed that in here.
Then it should, that should be 2016.
Okay. So for the, for 2016, we'll do the same, but for 2016-2271, Mr. Shuneman, you're the maker, Mr. Logan, you're the second with the change to the date to reflect June 9th of 2016?
Yes.
Okay. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Is that a one approved?
Number four?
Adoption of ordinance 2016-2274, annexing approximately 26.59 acres of property being zoned A1 into the City of Rock Falls.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2016-2274. Second.
Maker and seconder with the correction of June 9th, 2016 date?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions? Roll.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2016-2275, annexing approximately 30 acres of property being zoned B2 into the City of Rock Falls.
Move for the adoption of 2016-2275 with the 2014 change to 2016. Second.
Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Mr. Snow with the noted change of June, May, 2016. Further? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2016-2276, authorizing the issuance of general obligation alternate bonds to the City of Rock Falls, Whiteside County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million for the paying of costs of projects within the downtown tax increment financing district of the city, including but not limited to developing public green space and a hiking and biking trail, improving the riverbank, and constructing an outdoor entertainment venue, public restrooms, a water feature, and a skateboard park.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 2016-2276. Second a motion.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Mr. Shuneman for the adoption, second reading adoption of ordinance 2016-2276. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Rescues.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Five aye.
By majority, that passes. All right. We'll backtrack now, the gentleman has arrived. My pleasure to ask Mr. Watts to come forward. John, nice to see you.
Good to be seen. Thank you.
What gentleman?
My apologies to the council and the city for being tardy. What was that, Lee? Sorry. Thank you for accommodating me, I truly appreciate it. John Watts, representing the Optimist Club of Rock Falls and our Touch a Truck event, which this year will be our sixth year hosting the event and our fourth year anticipated working with the city and being at the location of the RB&amp;W District slab, however you want to call it, uptown there. We are requesting the, to be given permission to use that location for our fourth consecutive year. We are also requesting for the fees that in conjunction with that for the use of the property and the utilities to also be waived as they've been done in the previous years as well. Touch a Truck is an event that has grown over the past six years. It is a community event, it is a youth-based event. The Optimist Club of Rock Falls' main mission is a friend of youth, and the mission of Touch a Truck is look, touch, learn. We give kids and adults alike the same opportunity to look, touch, and learn about vehicles that maybe they've seen or don't get a chance to explore. We have everything from emergency personnel to commercial vehicles to privately owned vehicles, retro, current, whatever the case may be. Our whole goal is to have stuff that is neat for kids to see or neat for adults to see again with that whole premise of look, touch, learn. The companies that have been involved with it truly love it, they come back every year, they contact me every year and say, you know, when is Touch a Truck? When do we get to participate? They bring giveaways, they promote their businesses, and it's completely free. It's free to the business to participate and promote themselves as well as give back to the community. It's free for the attendees to attend. The Optimist Club puts on a food booth basically to cover some of our overhead for the porta-potties realistically and the giveaways. We give away 500 free toys, we're upping it this year because the response has been so huge. We give away five free toys to, or 500 to the first 500 attendees there. So we do that in conjunction with some great local sponsors in the community who, again, have supported us. So I could go on and on, I will not. I will answer any questions that you have, but on behalf of the, as the chairman of this event and behalf of the Optimist Club, I'm asking for the city's support. The city has supported it with vehicles in the past. I would again ask for that same support, but most importantly, for the location and the fees is what we're asking for today.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Folsom to approve the RB&amp;W District Event Permit App submitted by the Rock Falls Optimist Club and to waive the fees associated with the use of that area as well as to waive the fees for the electric service panel in the wad.
Come on down and vote, your chair is empty.
I noticed that it's empty. Yeah, I noticed that it's empty.
We have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Is there any additional discussion or questions that you might have for John?
Just like to thank the Optimist Club for all they do for the community. You guys do a lot of great work and Touch a Truck event is a big event. I mean, like you say, John, it grows every year and I think it's going to continue to grow.
Thank you very much.
How many do you have scheduled to come this year, John? Early estimates?
As far as participants, right now we're sitting at 40 companies participating and most of them will have multiple vehicles. Last year's count was 75 vehicles, I'm anticipating about 80 this year.
Good.
A few new things, it'll be exciting as well.
Further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Take your time.
Thank you very much.
You wanted to just come sit next to Lee, like old memories or anything?
Lee, don't take us the wrong way, but no.
I never liked you anyway.
City Administrator, before that gets going wrong.
Yeah, all right. First of all, your honor, I'd like to take this opportunity to give kudos to one of our department heads who I think deserves it tremendously. Sit down, Dick, it's not you. Janelle Luce has been with the city of less than a year now, I believe, I don't even believe it's been a year now, and she's been one of those department heads that has gone in fearlessly into some of these new situations, and I just really want to commend her on the job that you did with Bass Pro Shops and what a great success that was for the city. And Ken Freeman had a chance to talk to me about you, and as everyone knows, he does these tournaments all over the country, and he said Janelle was one of the top-notch people that he has ever worked with, and he knows how new she is. So we just got rave reports on her, and so I want to thank you for a job well done. All right, now on to business. Approval of the low bid for the RB&amp;W District Recreational Trail Phase One to Martin &amp; Company Excavating of 2456 East Pleasant Grove Road, Oregon, Illinois, in the amount of $491,380.80.
Make a motion to approve the bid?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Folsom to approve the low bid for the RB&amp;W District Recreational Trail Phase One to Martin &amp; Company in the amount of $491,380.80. Floor is open for questions or comments.
The sheets are included in your packet, so you can see what the range was of the estimates for the work or the bids for the work. At the high end, it was $666,000. So I felt fortunate as well as I think Willett Hoffman did on the bid that we received for $491,000 from Martin. As you know, this Phase One encompasses the area around the hotel of which we have told them repeatedly that we would get done as part of them coming here and building their hotel here. Any questions?
No, merely a statement. But it is for the citizens of Rock Falls that we do this.
Correct.
Any further? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Rescues.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Five aye.
Motion carries. Anything else?
Thank you, your honor, that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Mr. Ardini, anything from the clerk's office?
In the, just started the audit today, so other than that, I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Reese, anything from you? Okay. Mr. Frickenstein, anything for night? Thank you. Mr. Cox is not here. Mr. Simon?
Chief Nelson?
I heard that. Chief Cook? Mr. Serings enjoying the weather. Mr. Padilla? Janelle?
Okay, we have the timer going on here tonight, though. She's going to get buzzed or the music will start playing or something. Or you need a big hook. I just want to say real quickly that Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest went off amazing. Working with the Chamber and Terry Hicks was pretty smooth. I learned things about the River Chase I didn't know. I went down there to take pictures, got a band, because on that, anyone can go into the pit. They have nine-year-olds doing this race. The parents take them out on the little boats and they're going over 60 miles an hour. So I mean, that was really cool, the fireworks were amazing. I think it went very well. Now, Pink Heels is going to be July 29th and 30th. The Pink Party on the patio is July 30th, 6 to 9. There is going to be a DJ, there's going to be health and wellness vendors, there's going to be local fire department, police departments, emergency vehicles for people to walk through and look at. We're also having crews in pink. Anybody is invited. You can have a bicycle, tricycle, moped, go-kart, car, motorcycle decorated pink, and you can be on display. Absolutely no charge. And if you have any questions, go to visitrockfalls.com. I've given all of you a flyer and a participation form, so all of you are more than welcome to bring in something in crews in pink. We have the formation flying event that is July 22nd, Whiteside County Airport. It's the little airplanes that take off, they do different formations, and then they make their way to Oshkosh, Wisconsin. But it's the 30th, it's a 30-ship formation, and it's the 30th anniversary. And that's July 22nd. Whiteside County Fair is, Whiteside County Barn Tour will be on Saturday, the 9th. You can still get tickets for that, again, visitrockfalls.com. And I know I'm missing something here, but I have everything listed on an annual events first page, visitrockfalls.com.
Janelle, as long as you're up here, once again, I'd just like to echo what Robin said, and I'm sure that the alderman would as well. You know, outstanding job in bringing all the groups together down there. Yes, it was three separate events, but it was all one group community event. It was absolutely astounding.
It was nice to see, see the people walk all the way down and back and forth, you know, it was adults, kids in strollers, it was really nice to see, and everyone had a good time.
Yep, thank you again. Dan?
I got something to make.
Oh, we got a competition going on.
Yes, I will not talk along as long as Janelle, I promise. I just have just a formality, just asking to, for the addition of the write-offs on the uncollectible accounts to be added to the procedure manual. It's something that the city, it sounds like they've been doing all along, but we've just never formally put it in the manual. And we've only, we've only been doing it once a year. I want to try to do it four times a year, but I'm only going to commit to two times a year. So that's basically is it. But did you guys have any, I think you guys all had in your packets. Did anybody have any questions on how it was written and what we do? Okey-dokey.
So I, the chair to entertain a motion to make this correction to the policy manual?
Yes, just an addition, right?
So moved. Make their motions.
Mr. Reitzel, second by Mr. Shuneman by end of that. Okay. Any questions? Additional comments? Policy manual, please. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Klockler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you.
Word reports. Mr. Folsom?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Doesn't change if we start over here?
Doesn't change if it changes.
Okay. Mr. Shuneman?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Mr. Klockler?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, Black Hawk Hills Regional Council has moved into 309 First Avenue, and they're operating out of there at the present time. That's the old RFC DC building.
Okay. Mr. Snow? Mr. Shuneman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Kleckler?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, Black Hawk Hills Regional Council has moved into 309 First Avenue, and they're operating out of there at the present time. That's the old RFC DC building.
Okay. Mr. Snow?
Just like to thank the Chamber for Summersplash, Janelle, and the tourism, and all volunteers, and everybody who was involved in that. I think it was a great success. A lot of vendors out there. Got my buffalo burger for the year, so, just, I think it was a great success, and look forward to next year and success of that year.
Sir, Your Honor. Okay. Mr. Reitzel?
Yeah, Splash and the fireworks, fantastic. And you had a lot of great comments on the fireworks. That was quite a show. That's all.
Mr. Logan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Mayor's report, just to remind you that there will be a committee of the whole unless something changes, and it will be on, contrary to the agenda, it must have been the month of dates misconstrued, it'll be on July 18th instead of July 25th, and we'll be getting you more information about that. Destination Weekend Report, I think we covered that pretty well. Could talk a lot about that. It was a great weekend for the city of Rock Falls. A lot of people from the local area, but had an opportunity to walk through the pits and talk to a lot of the boat racers, and they just could not be happier with the way that the city extends itself to be able to have those events down there. And this year, there was more because they included a new championship for one of the divisions, and next year, they're looking to expand some of the kids' races to more national recognition. So, there's a good chance that we'll have more boats down there. The Chamber's part in it with the Summersplash. I think it went great. There was literally something for everyone to do somewhere on one side of the street or the other. And of course, as we've been talking about, Big Cat Quest helped get boats to the weighing scale, and again, a lot of local folks, but there was also some people that were from out of state that came quite a ways, and they also commented that for a first-year event, every, starting with the Friday night dinner and all of that sting, all the way through, things could not have went better. So, and there were a lot of people down there both days, and I think on the night of the fireworks, there were a ton of people there, and they had left and come back. So, as a result of some of the conversations that I had with some of the people down there, as I've already alluded to, you know, and it goes without saying, not everyone sees the positive nature. There were some people that raised questions about the time and effort, city employees, and overtime, and just a variety of things, and you're always going to have that. And just a couple of comments tonight, if you'll indulge me, please. Cities like Rock Falls that have displayed a can-do attitude, they figure out ways to get deals done and affect positive change in the community. These cities like us have a vision, and they like to build consensus. But it's important to understand that we're never all going to be on the same page. And one of my favorite presidents, Abraham Lincoln, you know, we would never have the nation we have today if he had not, after the war ended, brought many of the people that he fought against to his side, because it gives us an opportunity to have, I will say, a healthy discussion about one side versus the other. But getting that message out there makes sure that we look at things in their entirety as opposed to just in a singular manner. The cities like us, as we're going through things now, are motivated to change. They pay the price required to change, and yes, unfortunately, many times with change comes a bit of a trauma in the community. Change can be painful. You know, I've heard people tell me, proud of our past, and let's just stay there. What's wrong with that? But our motto is proud of our past and confident of our future. And not everyone can see the vision that lies ahead. But remember this, healthy things grow, and growing things change. So, communities like ours that welcome diversity or new ideas, and they make room for ideas that are outside the box, they're not afraid to feed, to, excuse me, meet and interact with the public. Hi, Gary. When everyone is positive and pulling in the same direction, and everyone is working for the common good, when you have that positive momentum in place, change is inevitable, because everybody gets on the same vehicle moving forward. And I think that a time ago here in Rock Falls, it could be said that we were on the edge of a precipice at one time here. What was going to happen when the factories closed? What was going to happen when all those good jobs went away? What happened when the housing markets started? What happened when the markets started to drop for investments? But Rock Falls is still here. Our census is down, as is many other communities. But the thing that, when I always, sitting in my chair, have an opportunity to look at, and many of you have been here a long time as well, is when those events occurred, we could have a whole different picture than we have now, very similar to what could have been different after the Civil War. But the past administrations and the past leaderships, both elected people here and people that serve on committees and different events throughout the community that bring things together like we just experienced, prove that we're not ready to go away yet, that there's still a lot of good to come. And our past leadership worked hard, and they started a vision, and for those of us that are following it and continue this effort, strive to make our community a better place to live. We want to increase property values. We want to bring in more sales tax. We want to bring in more jobs, and we definitely want to improve the quality of life for our residents. I'm going to tell you something you probably don't know. It's not going to happen overnight. It takes time. Change is inevitable, but it will take time, and we will hit bumps along the way, but we will continue to move forward. I truly think, and I'm kind of stealing from Adam said, from retail attractions last week in a meeting, the city of Rock Falls is on the edge of doing some great things here, of turning some things around, despite what's happening with the state of Illinois. We've already proven that. We haven't laid people off. We haven't had to reduce services. Our reserves are still strong. So, we've done a good job up till now, and I'm very confident we will continue that. Where we've gotten to today, and our ideas on the riverfront, our ideas on economic development, all that stuff started some 13 or 14 years ago. We mentioned that before. People set down a mission, a vision, excuse me, and a way to go. Now, we've changed some things along the way, the final product, but the final product was to make the community a better place, and that's what we're all want, regardless of our views on different areas. In fact, that's our job as elected officials, to make Rock Falls a better place to live, a better community as a whole.